All right. Good morning and welcome, everyone. This is Tuesday, January 18th. We will call this meeting to order. First, we'll begin with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jeff Gannon of the Chapel Hill United Methodist Church. So we'd ask spokes in attendance, if you are both willing and able to stand at this time for both. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of us all, we give thanks and we give praise for the gift and beauty of this day that you have made. Help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We ask that you would send down your power upon those who hold office in our beautiful city. Grant them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve you and this community, as we all seek the common good of all people. We surrender this meeting to you and pray that your kingdom will come and that your will be done in and through their decisions and deliberations this day. For we offer this prayer in your holy name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance is applied on the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January 10th, 2022, and the regular meeting of January 11th, 2022.
Has everyone had a chance to review both set of minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion about the minutes, now make a motion that we pass the minutes as they are presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Award: Urban Pioneer Award.
If you are here to accept the Urban Pioneer Award, please make your way to the front. Is it? Okay. So today, we recognize the participants of the South Central Neighborhood Plan. This Kansas chapter of the American Planning Association awarded the City of Wichita and the Metropolitan Area Planning Department with the Distinguished Urban Pioneer Award for South Central Neighborhood Plan at the 2021 conference. To receive this award, a comprehensive neighborhood or transportation plan must demonstrate creativity and innovation in meeting a community need or solving a public problem. The solutions must be sustainable, implementable, promote diversity and inclusion, and have demonstrated public support through cutting-edge outreach. This is the fifth time since 2010 that MAPD has received this award out of the many municipalities in our state. The South Central Neighborhood Plan was adopted in 2020 and is a plan by the community for the community. The plan pivots the targets, the target user of the document from administrators to residents, recommends achievable action items, and clearly states what neighborhood residents can do to reach their goals. So I want to thank the South Central Neighborhood Plan Advisory Committee, staff, and all those who participated for their hard work in crafting a cutting-edge plan for one of Wichita's historic neighborhoods. So please, join me in giving them a hand.
Well, thank you. My name is Adam Barlow Thompson, and I first want to acknowledge that the president of our Neighborhood Association, Janet Price, should be the one speaking to you, but she had a COVID exposure and was unable to attend today. In her stead, I am honored to receive the award on behalf of the neighbors of the South Central, or as we call it, SOCI. When we started this plan, our top priority was to focus on actions that any neighbor could take. The success of our neighborhood is determined by the people who live there. And I think this plan lifts, was lifted up for praise because it reflects this truth. The plan passed in January of 2020, which means its implementation has unfortunately fallen perfectly during a global pandemic. Maybe you've heard of it. Even in the midst of this challenge, we've had many wins over the last two years. We've continued to host neighborhood cleanups, including the Broadway Brush Up hosted in partnership with the Wichita Police. This spring, we'll be creating a cleanup kit that can be checked out by neighbors who form a team of at least three households to work on their alley or street. We became a Kansas pride community through the Kansas State Research and Extension Office. In 2021, we've logged over 1,100 volunteer hours within the neighborhood. With a grant with, from the city, we hired high school students to form a listening team in the neighborhood who encouraged neighbors to get to know each other. We initiated a neighborhood newsletter in the north portion of our neighborhood, which highlights the wins of local businesses and community events. We're working to support businesses that choose to move to South Broadway and have two new businesses on the corner of Broadway and Lincoln in spaces that previously had been vacant. We also have worked in partnership with Legacy Works, a nonprofit, to develop the Funston Community Garden at the corner of Broadway and Funston. These are just some of the many highlights that we are experiencing in SOCI, and we are so grateful for the neighbors who contributed to this plan, the officers of the Neighborhood Association, the cities for their guidance, and the many neighbors who make SOCI a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Public Agenda: Michael McCorkle. Ongoing Attention to Climate Change.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning and Happy New Year to everyone. I am Michael McCorkle. I reside in District 5, and Wichita is my hometown. I lived abroad for more than 30 years, in Europe, the Middle East, and Asia, with the last 15 years in Norway. I have seen the impact of climate change in different places around the world. I returned to Wichita in 2019 and share the concern of other Wichitaans that our city council's limited leadership on climate change action up till now has resulted in Wichita being ranked 99th out of the 100 largest U.S. cities as the second most unprepared city for energy transition, which unquestionably must happen. It is a matter of survival for our species and our way of life here in Wichita and around the world. Climate change is global, and everyone everywhere must be involved in solutions around mitigation and emission reduction. Mitigation means dealing with extreme weather because it is already too late to avoid a decade or two of dangerous weather, even if all emissions were stopped globally today. That's how long it is expected to take for the atmosphere to clear naturally. No one knows for sure, but climate change computer modeling is more accurate now than ever and has long predicted the extreme weather consequences, which become more frequent and more destructive every year. 2021 may well be remembered as the year Americans recognized that climate change is real, affecting their personal lives, disrupting local economies, and costing billions in extreme weather damage. Last year saw 20 extreme weather events across the U.S., costing more than $145 billion. Wichita's been lucky so far. Sadly, most U.S. leaders at all levels have ignored climate change in favor of oil and gas industry profits because our economy has been based on fossil fuels. In the future ahead, we cannot continue business as usual anywhere, any longer, if we are to leave a livable planet for future generations. 11 months ago, it was decided to begin persuading this elected body to support establishing a local sustainability board, as many cities across the country have done. It makes sense to have an advisory group to make policy recommendations, evaluate development plans, educate citizens, and coordinate volunteerism. Starting last February, this city council received 27 public inputs from high school students to retired professors, professionals, and young people planning their futures to demand that the Wichita City Council establish a sustainability board. In September, the Wichita Sustainability Integration Board was formally established, but has yet to be fully manned or begin any meaningful work for Wichita. All cities should be educating their citizens about climate change because everyone everywhere is part of the problem and the solution. Local governments can reduce emissions with innovative policies that encourage citizens to reduce emissions through incentives. Kansas is fortunate to be a state that can develop its wind and solar energy sectors to great advantage. I urge this city council to use the Sustainability Integration Board for the common good, to make Wichita more attractive for investment and as a community that attracts new residents and retains its youth. Today, I wish to remind all of you how important the work of this board is for Wichita's future. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And just a follow-up. Mr. Mayor, can we get an update on what the status is with the new board?
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you, the board has met once, and they have a second meeting scheduled for Wednesday, I believe. At that time, I believe they're going to work with the WSU Environmental Finance Center on some preliminary recommendations.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13.
Is there any discussion on consent agenda as it's presented? If there is no discussion on consent agenda items 1 through 13, then I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Gary Janison, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration today represent 100% of the improvement district for each respective petition, and all are valid per Kansas statute. Veranda's 2nd Edition is a new development. Projects for your consideration will provide water drainage, sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development. This is south of 13th Street, northeast of Greenwood Road in District 2. In January of 2021, the city council approved petitions for water and paving improvements to serve North 45th Edition, which is near 45th and Ridge Road in District 6. The developer has since submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to cover the cost of a private bid. Again, that's for water and paving improvements. High Edition, Phase 4, Maple and 150 First Street West in District 5. In June of 2021, the city council approved petitions for water, sewer, and paving, similar to the last one. The developers submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to cover the cost of a private bid for the same improvements. Staff recommends city council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the mending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Ballard.
I just have a question. Some of the adjusted prices seem to be pretty significant. Is that because, like, some of the plans have changed? Or inflation of supplies? Or?
Typically, it's a little bit of both. And I don't have the details. I can certainly get those to you on these particular developments. We have seen increases in prices, fuel, labor, across the board on all of our projects. You know, we talked about the North Junction last week and seeing a cost increase there with the bid. Unfortunately, we're seeing it again on a lot of projects across the board. So what happens, too, with a lot of these developments? The developers make some adjustments on the fly, looking at the housing market, looking at the demands of the market, the type of housing, and then will make changes to the pla, to the plans as it goes. One of the benefits of this process, to have the city council approve these petitions weekly, is so that we can provide the ability for them to keep moving forward. So I can get to specifics on any if you would like. There's quite a few changes that happen within these residential developments that can affect prices. And so I apologize, I don't have the specifics right now, but I do know costs have increased across the board.
No, that's fine. I just wonder sometimes if other people would bid on jobs, knowing that they change, and like, one of them increased almost 50%. So I just was curious. So, thank you.
I might just provide a quick reminder to something that's mentioned in here. We do allow a process by which the developer can bid the work. They still have to go through a formal bid process. So even with that, that part is still considered. And what's happening here typically is this is still being done prior to the bid, as they've seen changes happen and prices go up. So that doesn't necessarily preclude contractors from still bidding on that work.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Further questions of staff? See none. Is there a public input on this item? If there is none, then we'll take discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amended resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Wichita Ice Center Management Services.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item I have for you today is in regards to the Wichita Ice Center Management Services. A little bit of background. So the Ice Center opened up in 1996. The facility offers a lot of different recreational opportunities, entertainment, and has a lot of events there as well. In August of 2006, Rink Management Services, also known as RMS, was awarded a contract for the management of the ice rink. The contract extension expired in March of 2011. In 2011, Genesis Health Club was awarded the contract for management. Upon the expiration of the Genesis contract, staff and stakeholders agreed an RFP should be released. To note that, we worked really closely with the stakeholders on the form of the RFP and all the standards of the RFP. And they were also very much involved with the selection, which I'll talk about in a minute. The Wichita Parks and Recreation is seeking a management company that has experience and expertise and knowledge in management of ice rink operations and that will develop a strong interaction with the stakeholders. This was really important. What we've discussed in the past with the stakeholders is that they felt that they wanted stronger input in regards to how the ice rink is actually operated. So in analysis of the situation, we did receive two proposals, one from Rink Management Services, which also included a capital improvement plan, and one from Genesis. Both companies were interviewed on November 12th. A unanimous decision was selected, was to select Rink Management Services. The item also went to the Park Board, which also heard this presentation, and they also unanimously supported Rink Management Services. So Rink Management Services manages over 50 ice rinks across the country. They're very familiar with our ice rink because they once operated it in the past. The Rink Management Services can take over the operations with little downtime since they're very familiar with the ice rink as it is. The Rink Management will interview current employees to see if they are interested in continuing employment at the ice rink. Rink Management will also use a computerized management, maintenance management system to document and record all of the ice maintenance, which is really critical and important. It's a very technical and very finicky system in regards to when we have ice, and we want to make sure that those maintenance, preventive maintenance is put in place. In the first year of the initial term, no portion of RMS management fee will be at risk. And the reason why we negotiated this is because as starting into the year, there's a lot of different things that they're going to have to improve on, make some changes. But in years 2 through 5, they will actually be at risk. So if they do not make the budgeted amount, if they actually lose money, they will pay the difference. So that's the difference there. But the first year, we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to put some money into the ice rink, and we would be there to help them with that as well. Some considerations. The monthly fee is $6,500 a month, which we negotiated a cheaper term. The city will provide an account to monitor all the revenues and expenses. The city will be responsible for repairs over 5,000. The repairs less than 5,000 will be performed by RMS, and that will come out of the operating fund. The financial records will be available upon request. An annual audit will be conducted. A five-year contract will be in place with an option of five-year renewal. In addition, one thing I didn't add into the bullets is that there is a 90-day clause where we can end the contract on, from either, either party. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the contract. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council adopt the Management Services Agreement with RMS for the management and daily operations of the Ice Center and authorize the necessary signatures. Lou Lombardo from RMS is here as well. He came in for this meeting. So he's available for questions, and I am as well.
There are questions for staff. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. First off, my collective experience on ice skating was when I was 10 years old and it had an eight-stitch ouchie on my chin. So I don't speak from skating experience, but I do have questions related to the contract specifically. So page 2, where it talks about the termination. There's some conflicting language here, so I want to be sure I'm understanding it. It says, "Owners shall provide RMSC with at least 90 days' written notice prior to the end of the initial term or any then-current extension term." It then says, "Either party may terminate this agreement at any time, while providing the other party with 90 days' written notice." So which is it? Is it both? Does one take over the other? So I'm seeing the manager.
Councilmember, I'd like Jay Hinkle from the Law Department to address that. He was involved in the negotiation of the agreement.
I have several others after this, so I want to take them one by one.
Councilmember Frye. Mayor. There are actually three termination provisions in the contract. The first is 90 days at the end of the initial term or 90 days at the end of any annual extension. The second is what we call a termination for convenience. That is, 90 days, anytime, either party wants. The third one is found at the end of the contract, and it relates to an actual breach of that contract. And for a breach of non-payment of funds, which in this case couldn't go either way because they're taking financial responsibility and accounting to us, there's a five-day notice period. And for a breach of any other kind, there is a 30-day notice, 30, there's a 30-day notice to cure. They have an opportunity to solve the problem. And then if they don't, there's an immediate termination option.
That gives me some comfort in knowing that. Thank you. Next question is in Article 3. It talks about the compensation. So as I understand it, the only compensation they're getting in this contract is the management fee and then 50% of rentals on skate aids. So no other revenue split related to concessions or subcontracting of the space for the health club, et cetera?
That is correct. Any of those other revenues will go back into the operating to pay for the overhead and operations.
Okay. Traditionally, in the past, when we've had city facilities, like at our golf courses, the golf division has to pay for the internet, the phone service, et cetera. Will this vendor be able to contract out their own outside services? Or will they be required to use the city services?
They'll be using their own.
Okay. Next question. Does the current operator, Genesis, that operates the fitness bar, the concessions, does that end with this agreement? Or are they already talking to them about subcontracting continued operation?
It ends unless we just come up with an operating agreement with them and we have made an offer to a certain degree in regards to the fitness area.
Okay, thank you. I had any more? I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any process for oversight to make sure that the Rink Management Service is actually upkeeping the rink? Because some of the feedback we've been getting has been about services not quite meeting expectations of the users.
So a big part of the RFP that we put out was some really high standards and expectations. And so we put that in the RFP, which actually moves over into the contract. So there's expectations of maintenance and operation that's built into the contract, and that would be something that we would be overseeing and making sure that that happens. Also, we're really expecting that RMS will be meeting with the stakeholders on a regular basis. And they had that in the past, and they had some regular meetings with them. I would expect that to continue. So in the past year, we've really spent a lot of time working with the stakeholders, and they've let me know what is going on and what the expectations are. So I have a lot of eyes and ears on site, and we can also spend some time ensuring that those standards are met.
Okay. And also, do we have any say in the potential tenants for the upstairs? Is there any requirements that any potential tenants would have to meet in regards to the city?
It's going to be a mutual agreement with us and RMS. So as we look at what we can put up there, it doesn't necessarily have to be fitness. You can look outside of the box, and we can think of some other things as well. But it's set up already for fitness, and it could be a win-win on a lot of different levels, depending on the situation. So we will definitely be a part of that decision.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blubog.
Thank you, Mayor. What was the performance whenever Rink Management previously managed the Ice Arena?
What was their performance before?
Yeah, as far as the cost of the, cost of the city above and beyond. Were they bringing in money, were they losing money?
So what I recall was, it was roughly, I can't be sure. It was $4,000 a month, I think, is what we were paying them. The first couple of years, they were actually making some money. The last year that they were operating, it's my understanding that they lost somewhere less than 10,000. less than $10,000. So we're, we're talking probably a little small amount of loss, but we can definitely expect them to do much better than that in the future.
Wasn't there some six, six-figure losses early on?
Not to my knowledge.
Further questions of staff?
I'm still going, Mayor.
Of course, my apologies.
Thank you. Because the, the reason I'm asking is because I thought there was some six-figure losses early on. And whenever I read the agreement in Article Three, it says, "In the first year of the initial term, no portion of the RMSC management fee will be at risk." And it, it, it seems to me that it, it opens it up for unlimited losses. Can, can you better explain that? Because I think you said something about they'd, they'd make up for it or something after year one, but there's unlimited losses in the first year.
The first year, we wanted to make sure there's an opportunity for them to make some adjustments and changes in their first year. And so we're going to work with them on that. Years two through five, they will not have any losses that charge the city.
Do we have a not-to-exceed number in the first year?
We did not put that in the contract.
So it's just open to, if it was a million-dollar expense, would be open for that?
No, Councilmembers, we've got, we receive monthly financial reports from them and operational reports. So we'll be able to watch their performance, both on the revenue and expense side, and we can make adjustments and have them make adjustments in operations if we have any concerns in that first year. Plus, if for some reason we were to get to impasse, and respond, again, as Councilmember Frye asked, we have the ability to terminate for, in a very short period of time if there is financial, a lack of financial performance, and then also we have the 90-day provision on top of that.
One last question I have is, we had the scenario where the current operator owns the Thunder, and I think they were using the ice for their practice. Has there been any kind of negotiations or anything where they can continue to use that with a new operation?
So most definitely, they can use the ice, and that's something that we expect to continue to happen. And we also, in the offer, offered the Thunder office space as well. So I've not had a response to our latest offer to Genesis for the office space, but we definitely want to have a continued relationship with the Thunder. That's expected, and hopefully it'll continue.
But we don't have any agreement going forward yet, right?
Not yet.
Okay, and they're, and they, I don't know what their season is, but they play.
They play.
This will take effect immediately, right?
I think we're looking at transition next week. So the Thunder plays through March, and playoffs, if I do believe, are in April and May.
And you've had conversations with them about?
We've had, exchanged emails back and forth, yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
Further questions for staff? Thank you, Troy. We'll open up to input from the public on this item. If you're here to speak to this item, you can make your way towards the front. Just when one person is done speaking, you can come up and get in line, be the next person. We ask folks to keep it right around five minutes is technically the cutoff time. I'll let you, of course, finish your statement if it goes longer than five minutes. And we ask that for the record, if you're comfortable, to let us know your name and your address. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jolene Taylor, 12-400 East Meadow Drive, Wichita. I have been involved with figure skating in Wichita for 20 years. Under Genesis management, over the past 10 years, the figure skating program has suffered greatly. And the building, and much of the building has been neglected. As you know, the chiller's completely failed and needed to be replaced. This took several months and was a great loss, great cost to the city. Multiple general managers have come and gone. Membership in the Wichita Figure Skating Club has decreased by more than 50% pre-COVID, and we are still without a much-needed skating director. Genesis does not use the Professional Skaters Association's rating system, which is a standard among coaches and rinks throughout the country. Genesis implemented an unrealistic payment structure that takes 50% of a coach's private lesson fee, causing most of our experienced coaches to leave Wichita and preventing qualified coaches from coming here. Many times, we pleaded with Genesis to change this, to be more in line with other rinks in the Midwest without success. Due to the coaching shortage, many of our skaters seek lessons in other cities, Oklahoma City, Dallas, Kansas City, and others. Years ago, we expressed our goals to host large figure skating events using both the Wichita Ice Center and Intrust Bank Arena. Since then, we have teamed up with the Wichita Sports Commission and Visit Wichita to host the largest competition United States figure skating has, not once, but twice, bringing thousands of skaters and their families to Wichita. In June, we will be hosting National Theater on Ice for the first time, once again bringing many skaters and families. These competitions bring millions of dollars to the city, and we have proven to United States figure skating that Wichita is a prime location for these events. But we cannot continue to host these competitions if our figure skating club is not strong, if we do not have a Zamboni that works, or if routine maintenance is neglected. We need management that cares about the facility and works with its user groups. In January of 2020, while we were hosting the synchronized skating sectional championships, two teams of approximately 20 skaters were kicked out of their warm-up room at the Wichita Ice Center by Genesis Management, just so one person could take a yoga class. Some of these teams came from as far as California. As we all know, there are multiple Genesis Health Clubs in Wichita at which a person can take a yoga class, but only one facility to host skating competitions. This occurred despite the fact that we had a contract stating this space was going to be used for the event. Good management would have been happy to work with us for that one week, considering the event made the Ice Center thousands of dollars. 10 years ago, Genesis promised to have user group meetings, and minutes were to be sent to the city and the Parks and Rec Department. During the three years I was president of the Figure Skating Club, we only had one meeting, and only after we begged for it. Our suggestions were once again ignored, and minutes were never taken. We have long been in need of quality skate sharpening equipment and properly-trained skate sharpeners. We still do not have this, and our skaters take their skates to Kansas City to be properly sharpened. We were promised to have a strong and competitive skating program. This has not happened. No one disputes that Genesis can manage a health club, but this has not been the case when it comes to the Ice Center. It has been made clear to us over and over that management only cares about the health club upstairs. The Wichita Ice Center has the potential to be one of the best rinks in the country. Our skaters should not be going out of town for lessons, and those that remain here should not be paying top dollar for entry-level lessons based upon a health club pay structure that does not work in figure skating. This morning in the Eagle, there was an article stating that there may be plans for a developer to build a $50 million ice center in east Wichita. Initially, that sounds exciting and great, but this would be terrible for, for skating to take the Ice Center out of the downtown location. It needs to be there. The reason we get these events from United States figure skating is because of the proximity to Intrust Bank Arena. We need to, we have a good Ice Center. We don't need to build another one. It just needs to be taken care of and managed well. So please, vote for change. 10 years has been long enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome.
My name is Deana Harris, and I live at 2523 Winson Court in Park City. I want to thank you for hearing us today. My family has been customers and volunteers at the Wichita Ice Center for more than 10 years. We are customers at the Ice Center about six to 10 hours a week. My, my daughter volunteers to teach Learn to Skate on Saturdays, and we volunteer to bring events to the Wichita community through the Wichita Figure Skating Club. I know there are families who donate more of their time and spend more of their money to support the facility, and I thank them. I am here today to ask the city council to vote to change the management at the Wichita Ice Center. I listened closely what was said at the Park and Recreation Board meeting last week. And what I noticed, and I hope you will notice today, is the people that are speaking to you are customers, but more importantly, were volunteers, thousands of hours a year to bring events and visitor revenue to the community of Wichita. Bringing these events and dollars to Wichita through ice sports is growing more and more difficult every day. Whether it is a facility or equipment failure at a hockey tournament, or adherence to a contract at a national U.S. figure skating event, there are complications anytime we host an event at the Ice Center between the participants and management. Over the last 10 years, it has seemed like a never-ending cat and mouse game where the customer volunteers have to fight for the Wichita Ice Center's identity as a city-owned facility run for the benefit of the citizens of Wichita. The Ice Center is a valuable asset to the city of Wichita and most of Kansas. I'm asking you today to please vote to change the management so this facility can stay where it's at and continue to host events. Before I came today, I looked up the economic impact of the two synchrosectional events that the Figure Skating Club held in 2018 and 2020. Both of them were listed in the Eagle as a $3.4 million economic endpoint, impact. That matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning and welcome.
Renee Pack, 3014 North Forest Lakes Court, Wichita. I am a U.S. figure skating judge, current member of the Wichita Figure Skating Club, and I was the president at the time when Genesis took over management. Rodney personally promised me 18 months he would make it a great figure skating program, which would be a win-win for the city of Wichita, for the figure skating club, for the ice rink. That failed to happen. At the time, before Rodney came on, Rink Management Services did a wonderful job in being transparent with their management style and with the rink, and they were always in constant dialogue with the user groups. It was a very good experience. I think every user group that you would talk to would tell you that. And so I would just love for you to please remember that this facility is for the community of Wichita and the users, and we've requested management change because they're not happy with how it's, it's working right now, and they would like for the upkeep of the rink and the decline of the programs to be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public discussion? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Michelle Gifford, 4900 East Idlebanks Valley Center, Kansas. I am here on behalf of the Wichita Youth Hockey Association. We are a not-for-profit organization serving students age five through 18. We are made up of more than 80% students who are under high school age. Why does that matter? That means that their parents, guardians, and often their siblings are joining them at the facility multiple nights a week. Our season runs from October to March. During this time, I believe we are the largest consistent revenue stream for the ice rink. In addition to that, we host eight to 10 weekends of out-of-state players to the facility, again, bringing revenue to this, to Wichita. I'm not going to replay history. As you focus on the future, the quality of life, and the riverfront, I encourage you to select an expert in ice rink facilities, maintenance, and programming. The selection committee, as well as the Parks and Rec Board, have unanimously recommended a change to Rink Management Services. I respectfully request you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. John Ford, 8505 East Creed Street. Not much of a public speaker, so this might be a little difficult. For those that don't know you, don't know me, my name is John Ford, and in July 2020, I started a petition with the city to change the management for the Wichita Ice Center. The petition spread like wildfire and received over 2,500 signatures and hundreds of comments in the first few days. I have them here if anyone's interested in reading them. As of today, it sits at over 3,700 signatures. Let me say, though, that I am merely the unified voice of the hundreds, if not thousands of individuals who've had enough and want to see a change. I won't take credit for any of this because this has been a movement with support, input, and dedication from many individuals beyond myself. But with that, let me give you the synopsis of what the users of the Wichita Ice Center have said and shared with me. Genesis has had the facility for the past 10 years, and over that time, programming for youth sports, figure skating, speed skating, and many other programs have suffered, almost to a point of unsustainability. In fact, if it wasn't for the multitude of volunteers who, many who would no longer be here today. It was because of these volunteers that the Wichita was selected as top four finalists for the Craft Hockeyville Contest, which is a nationwide search for the rink that deserves an upgrade. I will reiterate that volunteers made this happen and continue to try to sustain our programs. The building has had multiple issues, and for a number of years, the pro shop remained empty. Teams and individuals would come from, come to Wichita for a tournament or an event and be unable to replace commonly broken pieces of equipment. The rink themselves would have plywood up in place of the glass for months on end. Padding in the floor to protect the skates from damages missing in vital areas. Benches have come loose from the footings beneath due to the rot in the floor. Unfortunately, I could go on and on with a collection of deficiencies. Genesis stated in 2011 that they would hire the right people for the facility because they did not know how to manage an ice facility and have failed at this. In 2021, there was no director of maintenance for the majority of the year, and the current one is one of little experience when it comes to ice management. Prior to a youth practice, while cleaning the ice, he let the ZAM run out of fuel, pour hot water onto the ice while sitting on the ZAM. This melted the ice down to the concrete, and if it wasn't for the high school youth players, would have been worse. He also drove the ZAM into the boards due to his inability to operate that machine. Being a member of the selection committee, I was able to see the resume, and he has less than two years of maintenance as a whole, let alone any with ice manage, ice management. In 2019, the Ref Association had to withhold service due to three months of unpaid bills totaling over $12,000. In 2020, I received a letter from Dunn Allen Designs stating that Genesis IT Department has stolen the website design from them without payment and didn't receive that payment until he contacted local, local media after being ignored by Genesis CFO and IT. I have that letter here signed by Chris Gill himself. In 2011, Genesis, Mr. Ferris, to be exact, stood here in this room and told the city, and I quote, "Rink management is highly qualified to manage ice." He continued with the fact that there are two parts to managing a facility. One is the ice programs, and the other is the facility. Mr. Ferris even stated that he did not doubt RMS's ability to manage ice and programs, but questioned their ability to upkeep the facility. Rodney followed by stating that facility has a lot of deferred maintenance and paint on outside of the building. Unfortunately, over the last 10 years, those concerns have only expanded tenfold without resolution. Mr. Layton even said that, that continued deferred maintenance will only lead to significant financial difficulties in the future, and that hit home back when the chiller failed and the city had to put in over a million dollars into the facility. The community we have here, here in Wichita is passionate about the facility, and we don't want to lose it, see it run down any more than its current state. RMS has a solid plan to bring back the program levels up to, up with out-of-the-box ideas and brute force advertising. They're also nationally known to manage ice rinks across the country and laid out a maintenance plan to keep the current equipment running and attempt to bring any deficient equipment back up to par. Lastly, I'd like to state that the only reason RMS did not continue running the rink was because the previous contract had expired, and the renewals allowed, and the required a new RFP to which was awarded to Genesis. RMS did not have near the same complaints, if any, that we do have at this point with Genesis managing the Wichita Ice Center. Please consider the users of the facility, listen to what the community has to say, and allow RMS to manage and restore the facility and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? Good morning and welcome.
Good, good morning, Mayor and city council members. Celeste Russet, Wichita native and founder of Save Century to a nonpartisan, nonprofit group committed to bringing accountability and transparency to all of your city hall transactions. You are making the right decision today, so I congratulate you on the Wichita Ice Center rink. You've done an outstanding job of working with the constituents who use the Wichita Ice Rink. You've heard their complaints and concerns, and I applaud you for changing the management of this facility. Congratulations. I won't go into the history of Brandon and Rodney Stephen as managers of the ice rink, but you've heard how rundown this facility was. but you've heard how rundown this facility was, the problems with it, and the blame game that took place between Stephen Brothers and the city of Wichita over who was responsible for upkeep and maintenance. It was neglected, and for 10 long years, the users of that facility have begged you to make change. So thank you for this decision today. To demonstrate you are serious about accountability, please collect on the remaining $750,000 loan balance Genesis owners received to remodel the second floor. A cora I filed last year shows a remaining balance of nearly half a million dollars. Rodney and Brandon Stephen personally guaranteed this balance when they signed the contract 10 years ago to run the rink. They have numerous car dealerships and gyms throughout the United States, so it should not be difficult to collect the money owed and then use it to make the repairs Mr. Ford referred to, such as cleaning up the mold, removing the plywood, buying new equipment, and bringing the place back up to standards. Demonstrate accountability to Wichita taxpayers. Now for transparency. The Wichita Eagle reported today that Rick Werner, a developer involved in Starbond projects throughout the area, has plans to build a new ice rink center in east Wichita using Starbonds. He said once the center was built, he wanted to reserve time to support various hockey interests. Now that's an interesting development. Both Rodney and Brandon Stephen own the hockey team Thunder, so maybe as payback for losing the management contract for the Wichita Ice Center, they want to pull their hockey team out of the downtown ice rink and move the practice time to another ice rink paid for with taxpayer dollars. Sales tax, Starbonds, use taxpayer funds to pay off the development. This is where I'm asking you for transparency. Why would taxpayers want to fund another ice rink center using sales tax dollars? And where is the study showing a need for another place for the Thunder hockey team to practice? Is this something the Stephen Brothers threaten to do if they lost the management contract? Please do not use Starbonds to build this second ice rink in one of the most wealthiest parts of town, east side Wichita, where Top Golf's going in. If a developer believes there is a market in Wichita for a second ice center, let him use his own funds to build it, not Starbonds. Let the success or failure of a second rink rest on his shoulder and his finances, not on sales tax generated by taxpayers. Starbond projects in Wichita are not meeting expectations for tourism visits, nor are they meeting all the expectations for revenue. The new Ball Stadium Starbond project is missing revenue projections, and the last Starbond audit showed several of these projects will take decades to repay. If this developer wants to build an ice rink, let him, but don't use our money. So my questions today in closing are: Have we collected the nearly half a million dollars owed to the city by Rodney and Brandon Stephen? Second, has the economic development staff of the city had any discussions with Rick Werner on his proposed Starbond project for a second ice rink project? And finally, will the signage on Kellogg be monitored to reduce the excessive advertising for the second floor Genesis Health Club? Because usually, that's all you see is another renewal of "sign up now", memberships for the Health Club are about to expire. Those are my three questions in closing, but again, thank you for making this move. I think it's the right one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you.
This is the long schedule. Can I get this back?
Sure.
And I'll ask the manager to... If you could describe to us how an outstanding balance, if there is an outstanding balance, how that process works so that we can follow up with some information for questions from the previous speaker.
The agreement, Mayor, the agreement with Genesis required them to make annual debt service payments for improvements that were made to the Ice Center for the... for the... to accommodate the fitness center. They have an obligation to make those payments, as I said, annually. They are in arrears. We have discussed that with them. We have... Our Law Department has been involved in those discussions, and we will continue to pursue that debt.
So the city is continuing to pursue the debt?
That is correct.
And just with the... I haven't read today's paper, but can you just briefly describe to us how a Starbond project works? A developer can't just announce that they're now going to do Starbond projects in the paper and then run a hook for that. Is that... Can you tell us a little bit about the process and where some of this might be coming from?
Right. Mayor, private developers are entitled to bring projects forward to the city if they feel that they meet the criteria in Starbonds. However, ultimately, the council must approve Starbond projects and approve the submission to the Department of Commerce for the state.
So it takes local, this body, and then also the Department of Commerce for approval?
Correct.
Local and state approval?
Right. And my recollection is that the legislature last year put some additional requirements on Starbonds for more accountability and to be able to tie tourist dollars directly to projects.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I just wondered, have there been conversations with anybody here at City Hall about this new development? As far as Starbonds or anything?
Councilmember, I have not talked to Rick Warner about that.
Thank you.
Further discussion from the public or input from the public?
Doug Ballard, 20 Buffalo. I just have a quick question. If I understood the presentation properly, it looks like we're... We're going to have to spend some money to bring the ice rink up to par to turn it over to this outfit to run it. And I just wondered, do we have an idea how much money that is?
Ms. Manager. Councilmembers, we do not have an estimate at this point. We have worked with Rink Management on some initial thoughts. They'll put together a short-term and a long-term capital project... or capital project recommendations.
Thank you. Next public speaker. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Lou Lombardo. I'm a regional manager with Rink Management Services. And when Rink Management had the facility 10 years ago, I was the general manager for the site. So I am extremely familiar with the users. I'm very familiar with the property itself. I have stayed in close contact with majority of the user groups and their constituents. And we look forward to, you know, taking on this venture and making the facility a great site. So we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public speaker. I know I have a whole list of councilmembers on... Then we wanted questions for the previous. Oh, very good. Apologies. We are actually, since you introduced yourself as the manager of the rink or associated, the council has questions for you, if you're willing to stand for questions.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's my apologies. Usually, discussion happens after, but because it's actual questions, we'll go ahead and allow this. Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you.
It's something we can get. Off the top of my head, I didn't provide that here. Correct.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for being here. One thing I heard from a few of the previous speakers was the initial commitment years ago to meeting regularly and having close communication. Is that something you would commit to again?
Absolutely. During my 10-month stay here in Wichita, I've built a relationship with all of our users to the point that I was invited to Thanksgiving dinner and activities, family activities. So I feel very comfortable that even as a regional manager, I would be still in a lot of communication, along with whoever we choose for our general manager.
I appreciate that commitment, and it sounds like that's something that's really important to the stakeholders.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you describe some of the difficulties you had that led to losses in the last year that you guys did run the ice rink? And what has... What are you going to do different this time? What have you learned in the meantime to adjust?
That puts me... That's 11 years ago, so... I think at the time, one of the issues we had was the RFP process was taking a lot longer than was originally scheduled for, and the rumors had gone out that Rink Management was leaving, started putting a damper on user groups, being worried on what would happen. The original contract was supposed to expire. Top of my head, around December, and it pushed out through some additional extensions until March. So there were some concerns within the user groups of the changeover. And then there were a number of mechanical items that we were doing repairs on during the 10 months I was on site that we're trying to prevent a maintenance item, so.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I'm going to be slightly redundant from my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, but I had the same line of question about user groups and having meetings with them. And I know that our Director Houtman said that there would be expected that they would happen. But just to solidify it a little bit more, is there... Can we... Will they be quarterly? Will they be biannually? And then also, it would be my request that minutes from those meetings be shared with the Park Board.
Sure. The expectation or the thought process that I've had is there's four members that were on the selection committee, kind of the lead of each of those organizations. We will meet monthly.
Monthly.
And then during my quarterly visits to the site, I will pull all the user groups or each of the user groups, such as the Youth Hockey Board of Directors, all into a meeting with myself as well. And then, of course, the general manager will always be available on site. And then the user groups will have my phone number and email as well.
Thank you for solidifying that.
That's all the questions for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll continue on with the public comment section for this item. Good morning and welcome.
Tony Reese, Wichita, Kansas. I'm the president of the on-ice officials that referee all the hockey games and the youth and as adult. And ever since Genesis has taken over, we've had payment issues with them. So the funny thing is, we collect the money from Genesis after we've done our services. That monies the players actually pay for, so they don't have to take money out of another budget, another bank account to pay us. The players and the youth association pay us. And they just hold the money. We bill them. Several times, we're 60 days past due. We're not talking a couple hundred dollars. We're talking thousands of dollars. One time, it was $12,000. I sent several emails and phone calls to the CEO or CFO of Genesis. Never returned. We told them, if we don't have payment by a certain date, we're not playing. We're not going to ref. Payment never came. Didn't ref. It was during the playoffs. Players were ticked that they could not play because we went ref. Had a meeting the next day with the CFO, and he was very upset that we didn't play. We didn't let him play because of roughing. And I said, "Well, if you would have returned emails and phone calls, we could have taken care of this. And if you would have paid the bill, we would have done roughing." He says, "I don't understand why you guys even need refs for ice hockey." So that's something that says something. This is not the rink manager. This is the CFO of Genesis. He was meeting on Central Avenue. Doesn't understand why we need referees. That's the people that are running this rink. I told him, "You can't play basketball without refs. You can't play softball without umpires. Same thing with ice hockey." He didn't understand that. He says, "This will never happen again." I said, "You're correct if you pay your bills." We've had several issues again. Just recently, the last payment last month, they actually had to deliver the check to our trader at his home because we were going to say we're not roughing again, and we had a big tournament coming up. So RMS, we've never had a problem with them. With their past presidents, I've talked to them, never had a payment issue. Genesis issues every month collecting money. It's the players that pay it. It's not another budget. They didn't understand that. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Is there further public input on this item? See none. We will bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. And this is, I guess, probably for Bob, maybe Director Houtman. But I know we've had conversations about there will be an annual audit, obviously, but then maybe some sort of rubric or some sort of instrument or tool that we develop so that when we have end-of-the-year contracts, we do an evaluation of the facility both inside and out to make sure that the contract is being upheld and repairs are being taken care of and different things. So just a request that that does happen, that we have some sort of document that can be utilized to ensure that the facility is being maintained at the level that the contract expects. And then also, I would appreciate, I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I would anticipate they would agree, having some sort of follow-up from that from the bench. So, you know, an annual, this is how the contract goes, this is whatever, just so that we can make sure that we're monitoring the situation and keeping... we're getting updates on at least an annual basis, if not more. Thank you.
Councilmember Maggie... Excuse me. My goodness. My apologies. Councilmember Ballard, not Councilmember First Name. My apologies.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone that took time off of work or whatever to come and speak today. I know how important sports and extracurricular activities are for my son, and I would do the same, but I know sometimes it's not easy to take off work. So I really appreciate all of the emails that you guys took the time to send. I know that means a lot to me and probably my colleagues as well. So thank you very much to everyone that took the time to come and speak your mind about this specific issue. So thank you.
Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some concerns with... It seems like a lot of you are talking about conditions. It seems like a lot of work needs to be done. And we've got an agreement with not to exceed number in there. And then we don't have the financials on what the actual operating losses were. I think everyone's in agreement. We probably need to go a different direction with management. I would like potentially... I mean, can we get that information in a week or so? How long would it take to get the financials on the previous management? Maybe get some kind of inventory, conditional inventory?
Councilmember, your mic is off. Your mic is off. My apologies. Sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I didn't want you to speak without the mic being on.
Councilmember, it'll take a little longer to get a conditioned inventory. We want to do an exhaustive walkthrough with them and the users, make sure we identify what the immediate needs are. And they have... We have had some preliminary discussions in that regard, but it's going to take us a little while to do that. In terms of the financial performance, we can provide the information, you know, pretty quickly in terms of what happened, you know, under the previous contract with Rink Management. But that's the reason that we built this contract the way we did, is to protect us going forward so that their management fee is at risk to protect us in any losses from years two through five. We established the baseline in year one, and we have monthly financial reviews with them so we can adjust even in year one to protect our financial interests.
But we don't have any kind of estimate or anything? You'll just be looking at it month to month? I mean...
No, we'll have a budget established when they start the... For 2022, there'll be a budget that's established. In fact, they submitted a preliminary budget as part of their proposal.
With no not to exceed number, correct?
There is not a not to exceed in that. However, as I said, we have monthly reviews, which will keep us from running any kind of significant deficit in that first year.
Can you explain to me the history? Like, last fall, didn't you put an RFP out there that you were going to sell the arena? And then we went a different route, or can you kind of bring us up to speed what we were...
Sure.
What the thoughts were there?
And we went out with the proposal. When we went out with the proposals, we, we gave proponents two opportunities. One is to submit a proposal for the purchase of the facility, and the other was to submit on the management of the facility. We received one proposal for the purchase and two proposals for the management. The proposal for the purchase was not in the city's financial interest, and so we didn't pursue that. And instead, we evaluated the two proposals for management.
It's the reason I asked that, to try and get better evaluation, is what, what condition is, I don't think of any. From Mayor, it sounds like it is pretty bad conditions, I just want to get a better grasp on what we're actually looking for.
That's why I want somebody qualified to be able to help us in, in that evaluation. What, what rink management has told us, and they can speak to that if, if they would like, but there are some issues that need to be addressed immediately and others that need to be included in a five-year program, that, that over time will create more of a problem for us in terms of maintenance if we don't address it. But many of the issues don't have to be addressed on day one.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Just want to follow up on a conversation earlier related to the star bond issue, and this is probably going to be more legal directed also. But there's nothing in the world of the hypothetical here. If there was a star bond proceeding for a new arena elsewhere in town, a proposal, there would not be a breach of contract with this contract with RMS if we went that route, if we decided to go down that route. Because we have the termination agreements, the way they're spelled out, we could cancel at any time if we decided to pursue that. But as it's written, I don't see a breach of contract if this were to happen at the same time. Is that correct? I thought I saw Jay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion from the bench on this item? If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the management service agreement and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open, or all members cast the vote. Ever receive six yea votes to one nay vote, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 Police Uniforms and Uniform Equipment Accessories Management Program.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Lim Moore, Wichita Police Department Deputy Chief. Okay to get started?
Losers.
Approximately, to give you a background, the Uniform and Uniform Equipment Accessories Management Program, an RFP, went out in November through the city. Approximately 700 Wichita Police Department employees receive an annual allowance to purchase uniforms and equipment. The uniform web-based system of ordering uniforms and equipment is a well-working process that we have in place currently. The RFP, the request for proposal, was issued in November of 2021 for a web-based system for ordering, purchasing, and delivery of WPD uniforms and equipment. The RFP was distributed to six firms, and responses were received back from two firms, Galls LLC and a local company, Basingers. A staff screening and selection committee was formed, and it was comprised of several different representatives from departments within the organization, the city organization, from finance, purchasing, law, police, airport police, fire department. They reviewed the proposals and interviewed and evaluated systems demonstrated for both respondents to the RFP. Based on the evaluation of the proposals, interviews, online systems demonstrations, and the selection committee's recommendation, recommended Galls LLC as the provider for the purchases of WPD uniforms and equipment utilized, and the utilization of the web-based solutions. The recommendation is based on the ability of Galls to best meet the desired needs and objectives of the RFP, including the web-based ordering system, reporting capabilities, staffing and service support, inventory, delivery, and costs. Galls has been in business for 54 years of service in the public safety market. Galls provided a wide variety of products and services that include uniform design, product development, quality assurance, full uniform embellishments, customer websites, customer reporting, and full range of uniforms and equipment in private label, as well as top brands in public safety. Galls LLC holds their current contract with the City of Wichita. Authorized members of the WPD are able to purchase approved uniforms and equipments through the, the city, through the website. The legal department has reviewed and approved the contract as to form. It is recommended, actions is, it is recommend that the City Council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Frye, for questions?
No questions, I would just like to compliment the Deputy Chief on his classy uniform today.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that very much. Helps me to receive those compliments, feel more comfortable, thank you.
Further questions or comments for staff? See none, thank you, sir. Is there any input on this item from the public? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I also wanted to, on the side note, just congratulate Deputy Chief on the promotion, and publicly remind everyone that he was my dear teacher in fourth grade. Congratulations.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open, the role members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 Railroad Crossing Improvements.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. I have the next five items on your agenda this morning. I will try to be efficient, I apologize in advance for wearing you out. The first item is 2022 Railroad Crossing Improvements. There are approximately 185 railroad crossings within the city. Capital Improvement Program includes annual funding to help improve the crossings. These improvements include, require coordination with the following railroads: BNSF, Union Pacific Railroad, Canton, Oklahoma, and Wichita Terminal Association, which is primarily within the core area of the city. Most of the improvements are made by the railroads, and a portion of the costs are paid by the city. Some maintenance work, such as minor improvements to crossing approaches and drainage improvements, may be performed by the City's Department of Public Works and Utilities. Some recent improvements that were made with 2021 funding were on Douglas east of Millwood. You can see that the railroad comes in, replaces the paneling around the tracks, and generally the support from the city then is the approaches to the railroads. This is also work done around the same timeframe on Millwood, south of Douglas. This program generally is based on hearing from citizens, complaints from those who use the roads every day. We have staff who does work with these railroads, stays in communication with them on a regular basis, so we've got a pretty good feel of what needs to be repaired and where. And we're making some pretty good progress over time. By the time you get around to 185 crossings, it's, it's about time to start again. So the 2022 to 2031 adopted CIP includes $150,000 in 2022 for rail crossing improvements. In January of 2021, the City Council approved $150,000 for 2021. Staff recommends initiating the full funding from 2022 at this time for total budget of $300,000. And I might mention something here real quick, because this is a little bit misleading the way we've portrayed this. Most of the work from 2021 budget is complete from a, from a very specific budget process standpoint. It makes sense for us to add the next year's funding to the previous year so that we can keep the projects moving with that full budget in place. So I'll find a different way to portray this next time. There won't be $300,000 worth of work in 2022. We'll use up whatever remaining funds are, which isn't much in 2021, and then primarily $150,000 in 2022. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. With that, staff recommends City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? If there's no input from the public, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, approve the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open, or all members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Design Funding for Multiple Capital Improvement Program Projects.
Again, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The next item is a request for design funding for multiple capital improvement program projects, and these projects are in districts one, four, five, and six. The adopted capital improvement program includes multiple street projects that are identified to start design in 2022. These projects include 135th Street West from Central to 13th Street North, Commerce and St. Francis area improvements, which is south of the Interest Bank Arena, and Douglas from Seneca to Meridian. So looking at each of these projects' areas, real quick, 135th Street West from Central to 13th is the only unimproved section of 135th Street between Kellogg and 21st Street North. We hear from the public quite a bit, those that live in this area, those that go to the Northwest Y in particular, right now from Kellogg to 21st Street North, we have a multi-use path on the west side of 135th through that entire corridor with this one gap missing. We've got sidewalk on the east side. All of the roads have been improved to three lanes with the center turn lane, drainage improvements, so this will fill in a nice gap there. And again, access to the Northwest Y MCA has been of particular interest to those that live in the area for pedestrians. The next project is, propose improvements to St. Francis and Commerce between Waterman and Kellogg, south of the Interest Bank Arena. I might mention that this project also has been identified for special consideration by the design council, so there's an added 2% budget of the estimate included within the CIP, and that'll be a big part of what we evaluate going forward with the design. I wanted to show you that this is a concept we had, we had previously developed some years back when first looking at this area. Due to other priorities, the project kind of got pushed back. NCAA tournament timing pushed it back. I think it's good timing to come back and look at this project. We've heard from multiple developers in the area very recently, especially along St. Francis, which is the left side here, the street to the west. A project here would provide a lot better connectivity, parking opportunities, both for pedestrians on that connectivity, as well as vehicles. This isn't an area that we're looking to necessarily improve traffic flow, but more for to make it work for pedestrians. A lot of time with the Commerce Arts District, they'll close off Commerce at different times for different events. We can provide additional parking along St. Francis for that. You can see a couple of areas through here that we would connect St. Francis and Commerce. This concept was well-received by the public. Previously, we had high-level public engagement. We will do that all over again. We're not assuming that we're starting with this concept as a place to go, but we're going to use it as, as a benchmark when we start talking with the public. So again, we've, we've heard from numerous developers who are anxious to see this happen. Again, the, the request today is design funding to begin the project. And I'll talk about all three of these in just a moment when they're expected to go to construction. The last project we're requesting funding for today is improvements to Douglas from Meridian to Seneca. Just to give you some concept of where this is at in relation to the baseball stadium, you can see we're a little bit west, and this would be a continuation of improvements that we've made in Delano on Douglas. This would evaluate the use of Douglas, in particular of how it relates to balancing vehicular traffic, transit, bicycles and pedestrians, and on-street parking. Right now, there are sections of Douglas maples a little bit the same way. It's kind of hard to tell if it's two-lane, three-lane, or four-lane, exactly how you're supposed to drive it, depending on, and most people don't know if they can even park on street. So what we would look at, again, is a design to try to accommodate all those the best that we can, utilizing the Bicycle Master Plan, input from the Wichita Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and obviously from the City Council. This project also has been deemed one for special consideration by the design council. There's, so there's an additional 2% funding included with the overall budget. Request a budget for design and staff oversight for each project is as follows. All of these fundings for designer in 2022 for 135th Street West, that's $300,000, and the construction funding of $4 million is currently programmed in 2025. Commissary improvements is $450,000 for design in 2022, and $4.5 million for construction in '24. Douglas is $150,000 for initial design in 2022, and $4.9 million for construction in 2024. With that, staff recommend City Council approve the budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I will tell you before I forget, too, that we will come back to the City Council for approval of actual design concepts for each of these projects during that same period of time. We will start working with the design council on the two projects that, that need to go before them, following our, our normal policy to, then we would go to the district advisory board, the respective district advisory boards, before bringing all of that back to the City Council. So staff recommend City Council approve the budgets, again, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Blubog.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to get a better understanding of the Douglas, Seneca, to Meridian, what was the budget on that? Can you back up your slide? What was the?
So the, the initial budget to begin design is $150,000. We also have additional funding in 2023, because that's probably not going to be enough for design, but that'll start to develop the concept. And then the construction budget, which includes the 2% for ours, is $4.9 million in 2024.
Just, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it, I'm just trying to understand what, what 5 million is on a, are we spreading the sidewalk out to 10 foot? Or are we working the lane? What exactly are we doing there?
So, so especially with the, um, look at the aesthetic improvements, and this being a special consideration project, we would look at a full reconstruction of the project. It could be that there are improvements to pedestrian access, there will be, and I don't doubt that we might go with wider, wider sidewalks also. We would be looking at some aesthetic enhancements, some probably bulb outs, like you've seen in typically in the Douglas area, where we bring the curb out. That helps to better identify parking areas. It also provides some traffic calming effects. So I don't think that we necessarily need to look at improvements to Seneca or Meridian intersections. I know we need some drainage improvements in the area, that's where we can start to see costs increase. Right now, this is just the best estimate that we've got. But with completely rebuilding that, and again, trying to address pedestrian and multimodal issues, that's where we expect to see a little bit higher cost.
So, so how does this change? Here, a few months ago, we just changed our model on the Prairie Travelers Trail we've been working on, where we said we want to go down Seneca, cross over to McCormick, and then, do you remember where we wanted to? I wanted to run it around along Meridian all along, and we didn't want to do that because we wanted to connect Friends and Newman. We decided to go down Seneca. Now that we're going over there here, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a better idea as to what this looks like.
So the Bike Bed Advisory Board made a recommendation for what we called the Sutterly Route, the one that you just mentioned, that goes by Friends and Newman, for the Prairie Travelers that we're working on right now. So what I think this can really do is provide a secondary connection effectively to the same area. Going down Douglas was also a recommendation that we gave to the Bike Bed Advisory Board, and then heading south from there, basically to where we end up at Kellogg and head west. I would, if I had to guess, I would suspect when this section of Douglas is done, we'll probably have on-street bike lanes, most likely. I think all it does is provide some redundancy, which is a good thing, and that we may have both the north and south route to get down to that same area.
So, you know, we've had this discussion for years now, we always talk about the connectors. So do we feel like we have a good connector at Meridian?
Sure, we can absolutely get south on Meridian. Again, that was one of the recommendations we had that we've looked at with you and others and the Bike Bed Advisory Board.
Because we've got to get to south Wichita somehow with our turn.
We do, we do. I think what this does, so, so again, the recommendation of the Bike Bed Advisory Board is going south, that Sutterly Route that we've previously looked at, that's for sure going to happen. With these improvements, and if we provide on-street bike lanes, it's really easy to go south on Meridian and connect to that same spot also, and we'll end up with two connections to the same area. That's what I think is probably going to happen.
Okay, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Further questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? If there's no input from the public, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, a chair will recognize Councilmember Johnson. If there is no further discussion, a chair will recognize Councilmember Johnson as this resides in District 1, as well as other districts.
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the council approve the budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Johnson and was seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Funding for water main replacement in George Washington Boulevard from Mount Vernon to Pawnee Streets.
Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The next item before you is funding for water main replacement in George Washington Boulevard from Mount Vernon to Pawnee. The adopted CIP includes a water main replacement project, again, in George Washington from Mount Vernon to Pawnee Streets. I might mention that our CIP includes almost $11 million annually for water main replacements of varying sizes and across the city, primarily based on condition and different analysis that we make of our system throughout each year. Sometimes, there are projects like this one of a larger magnitude that are set out from that funding, in addition to that funding, within the capital improvement program, and this is one of those. This map is a little bit busy. It's kind of hard to see all the blue lines or existing water lines, but this is a larger section of line, 16-inch pipe. This had a number of leaks in the past years, and that's what's really driving our being in front of you today to ask for funding to begin design. Due to the size and location of the water main within the existing right-of-way, these leaks have had significant impacts to the pavement on George Washington Boulevard, not to mention causing inconveniences with traveling public and adding burden for staff to continue to make repairs. This main is a primary water supply to an area that includes Aerospace, Industrial District, Spirit, and others that are in that same area. The adopted CIP includes $800,000 in 2022, $1.5 million in 2023, and $1.7 million in 2024 in water utility funding. Staff recommends initiating $800,000 at this time to begin design. We would expect any funding left from that would go to construction, so this will be a multi-year project, looking at a construction cost estimate in the neighborhood of $3.5 million, probably start sometime in early 2024. We'll try to expedite design and get to a point that we can get this replaced sooner. Oops, sorry. With that, staff recommends City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then a chair will recognize Councilmember Hoheisel for a recommendation, excuse me, for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my first one, so it's a little like watching a toddler take its first steps here, so bear with me. I move that City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by, made by Councilmember Hoheisel and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Well done, Hoheisel. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2020 pedestrian corridor safety improvements.
Next to last item, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. This item is a request for funding for 2020 pedestrian corridor safety improvements. Within the CIP, there was an item for 2020, actually in the 2019 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program, not to confuse you with a lot of dates. That funding was unused, and the capacity was carried forward in the current CIP. The project is intended, this overall project that is included in the CIP every other year, is intended to make pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements to primary corridors. Those projects are prioritized based on input primarily from the Bike Bed Advisory Board. We get information from District Advisory Boards. We get information from all of you as council members, from the public. As staff, we try to bring all that information together and create priorities of where the funding would go, and then bring that to you. The 2020 funding is intended to be used for McLean Boulevard from Central Avenue to 13th Street North and the pedestrian crossing near 10th Street North. Any remaining funding, although I would not necessarily expect any here, would be used to provide the same type of improvements for another priority corridor. So previously with McLean, the City Council had taken action to improve what's called neighborhood improvement funding for a portion of this. That funding's no longer going to be used. That will come up on the next item, that we're going to use it somewhere else. So instead of that, we are now going to use, requesting use of this particular funding, this pedestrian corridor funding for this project. The request today is $500,000, which was included in 2020 in the CIP, added to the $150,000 that the City Council previously approved for pedestrian crossing improvements. That'll give us a total budget of $650,000. With your approval today, we are just about ready to bid this project. Plans are complete. We would, and just as a quick reminder, we're going to convert McLean to, from four lanes to three lanes between Central and 13th Street North, provide some traffic calming effects with that. There's been a request for some time now to provide a pedestrian crossing somewhere in the middle of the corridor. We figured out the best place to do that was 10th Street. This is all information. We've looked at the council before, but just as a quick reminder, this funding will allow us to move forward with that. So we'd expect the conversion to three-lane to probably happen sometime this spring, and based on material delivery, we would hope to have the pedestrian, signalized pedestrian crossing at 10th Street completed by this summer, but that's going to be driven a lot by the timing of that material. So, staff recommends City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. I know there's a lot of information. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then a chair will recognize Councilmember Ballard as this resides in District 6.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Ballard and then seconded by the Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Chester I Lewis Reflection Square Park Contract Amendment, Revised Budget, and Funding Authorization for Alley Improvements.
Is Gary the only one to show up to work today, or?
For the longest time today, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. Again, I thank you for bearing with me. The request before you is a revised budget, which is the guaranteed maximum price for construction of the Chester I Lewis Reflection Square Park, and funding authorization for alley improvements, which I'll discuss more in detail in just a moment. Just some history. In October of 2021, the City Council approved a construction manager at risk contract for the Chester I Lewis project. Since that time, staff has worked with a design consultant, artist, and a selected SEMAR contractor, which is McCown Gordon Construction, to finalize and develop a guaranteed maximum price, which we're requesting your approval of today. After completion of final plans in November, McCown Gordon provided bid pricing in late December, which exceeded the original construction estimate. I know you've heard that before. All prices seem to be higher than we thought they were going to be. Additionally, the developer will complete improvement to the alley between Market and Broadway. This is between the park and the Kansas Health Science Center, above and beyond what the city would have committed to in support of the overall project. The developer will design and construct the project and has agreed to a reimbursement of $150,000 for the city's contributions. Our original estimate for improvements to that alley was around $150,000. That's how we came to that number, and within, with your approval today, again, the developer will move forward with the alley improvements, and will provide that contribution to the The GMP, the gross maximum price negotiated with McCown Gordon, is $1,025,000. Again, based on the bids that they received on the proposed improvements, with an existing improved budget of $800,000. Several funding options to meet the budget deficit were evaluated. Staff also spent a lot of time looking to see what options maybe we could not do with the project, and it really was going to come to a point, it would be pared down, that it just wasn't going to even come close to reflecting what the council had previously approved. The capital improvement program includes annual funding allocations for athletic courts, rehabilitation, and maintenance. Due to capacity issues, the amount previously approved for 2021 athletic court projects will not be implemented and spent until 2022. Staff recommends allocating the 2022 athletics court funding to the Chester I Lewis Park renovation project. Staff will also review athletics court funding during the upcoming development of the 2023 to 2032 CIP to ensure that the shift of 2022 funding does not materially impact the maintenance of those courts. So again, I know that was a lot of information. We're asking for reallocation of the 2022 athletic courts funding to help with the increased costs that the SEMAR has seen with their bids. The existing budget of $800,000 was approved by the City Council in October of 2021 and is funded by tax increment financing. The adopted CIP includes $225,000 in athletic court funding in 2022, that again, we are requesting for reallocation to the park construction budget. The total revised contract amount or guaranteed maximum price will be $1,025,000. Speak about the alley again real quick. The $150,000 for the city's portion of the alley improvements was approved by the City Council on March 16, 2021, for neighborhood improvements. Our annual neighborhood improvements budget, which is included in the CIP, is intended to provide support generally to development or assessed-type projects like this, sometimes in existing neighborhoods. If there's an assessment project to pave a street, and there's a drainage project that helps serve a bigger good, we use this funding to help offset that, and so this kind of makes sense in the same area, to help offset a development project like this, to make improvements to the alley. Previous item with McLean in improving that funding freed up this neighborhood improvement funding that we previously, we previously were going to use on the McLean project. Might talk, mention schedule just real quick. Pending your approval today, McCown Gordon is ready to start construction in early March. There's very close coordination between the developer, the contractor for the Health Science Center, our staff, the design consultant. We've got a lot of people that stay in close contact weekly now to make sure we do everything we can to stay on track, so construction will be ready to begin in March. With that, the staff recommends City Council approve the contract and reallocation of funds, authorize, authorization of alley funds, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions from the council? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll go ahead and bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then a chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this item resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. This has been a great project. It's had a few hurdles, but appreciate Gary, you and your team, and the city team working through those and getting us to this point. I would move that the city approve the contract and reallocation of funds, authorize, authorization of alley funds, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Johnson and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structures.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It seems like we just did this about a week ago. I'm Kaylin Nethercot with Neighborhood Inspection in MABCD. The properties under consideration for you today are six of the 10 cases reviewed by the Board of Co-Standards and Appeals on November 1, 2021. The remaining four properties were given 30- or 60-day extensions, depending on the specific property situations. The properties we'll be looking at today are located in Districts 1, 4, and 6, respectively. Just as a reminder, it's been a bit since we've reviewed this, but, and I thought it might be beneficial for our near members as well. When property owners or their representatives are invited to speak to the Board of Co-Standards and Appeals, to appear at that public hearing to discuss their property issues, they're asked to come prepared to address a number of things. They're asked to address delinquent property taxes, premise conditions, including maintaining the structure in a safe and secure manner, in other words, keeping it boarded up. We touch on their financial ability to make repairs. We ask for any structural engineering or general contractor reports that they may have received to be presented to that board at that time, and then property owners are also asked to schedule an interior inspection with Courtney Capello, who's our chief building official. Now, if the owners indicate that their intent is to raise a structure on their own, they're asked to bring an executed contract with a demolition contractor and a timeline for completing that. So those are our pre-discussion items for property owners. Now, none of the six before you today had representation at that November 1 VCSA meeting, okay? So our first property today is 1417 North Ash. It's had an open housing case for seven months. The property taxes are outstanding for 2017 to 2021 in the amount of $1,524.66, including special assessments, and the amount of $299.95 that have accrued since 2017 for mowing. Special assessments are pending for 2022 for nuisance abatement and boardup, and total $2,502.12. The property has been placarded as uninhabitable in June of '21, and has been vacant for an unknown number of years. The Wichita Police Department has requested MABCD assistance with this property on two separate occasions. The current premise conditions include overgrown vegetation and debris on the front and rear porches. The structure itself is a one-story frame dwelling. The basement walls are cracking. The roof is badly worn. The front and rear porches are deteriorated, and there's a rotted and missing
And just, Councilmember Johnson, when he's usually our lean on on this, my understanding is we want to do these district by district? Is that...
My recommendation would be to do them individually, so if there's people to speak on each one, we can consider the public's comments individually by property.
Of course. In the district in which the previous house that was shown...
District 1.
District 1. Therefore, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there a property owner for this property present? This is actually kind of sad. I really liked that house, and was hoping that, over the years, somebody would buy it and do something with it. But since no one's here, and it is a hazard to the community, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended actions to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition, demolition, and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote.
Councilmember Blubak, would you cast your vote, please?
It was doing it to me last week. Just give us a thumb. Let the record show that Councilmember Blubak has voted aye. Having received seven aye votes, that motion does pass. Next item.
Thank you. Our next property is 1521 North Green Street. This is also located in District 1. This property's had an open housing case for two years and three months. The property taxes are outstanding for 2019 through 2021 in the amount of $3,169.45. That does include special assessments accrued since 2020 for nuisance abatement and boardup, totaling Special assessments are pending for 2022 for nuisance abatement, boardup, and mowing, in the total of $1,951.68. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in March 2018 and has been vacant for an unknown number of years. In the last five years, there have been two reported police incidents at this location. The structure itself is an open one-story frame dwelling. It has a cracking concrete foundation, a badly worn roof, deteriorated front porch, rotting and missing composition siding, and rotting and missing wood trim and framing members. The premise conditions are currently maintained, because we've maintained them.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is the property owner of this property here? That this also looks like a danger to the neighborhood. I would move... That this also looks like a danger to the neighborhood, I would move that we close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structures.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass.
Our next property is 1614 East 15th Street North. This property has had an open housing case for eight months. It's also located in District One. The property taxes are outstanding, excuse me, for 2018 through 2021 in the amount of $1,349.12, including special assessments accrued since 2018 for mowing, totaling $255.96. Special assessments are pending for 2022 for nuisance abatement and boardup totaling The property was placarded as uninhabitable in July 2021 and has been vacant for an unknown number of years. In the last five years, there have been four reported police incidents at this location. The current premise conditions include overgrown vegetation. The structure is a one-story frame dwelling. It has a shifting and cracking concrete foundation with missing areas, rotted and missing composition siding, a badly worn composition roof, a deteriorating front porch, and rotting and missing wood trim and framing members.
Before we pass this to District Member One, Councilmember Bluebog is on the board, so we will open up for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just hearing Councilmember Johnson read the motion. Is it realistic? Do we really have contractors that are on these in 10 days and taking them out in 10 days in this environment? Is that really happening?
That 10 and 10 allows the owner the time to do that. And if they do not, then we kick in our processes after that.
Okay. But we can't do it that fast either, right?
No, no, not, no.
Okay. I was just double checking.
No, no, no. That's the owner's opportunity to step up and do something in that 10 and 10 period, and then our processes kick in after that.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
No problem.
Councilmember Ballard.
Yeah, thank you. So I apologize, but what is the process here? Like, I'm having a really hard time. I know that there's nobody here, but I'm having a really hard time just being like, yeah, they didn't show up. Let's just knock it down. Like, that's hard for me because some of them look better than others, but I think some of them could be rehabbed. And so what does that look like as far as your communication with the owner and like, how does that process work?
So when we say that we've had a housing case on a property for a number of months, that's how this starts. As we receive a complaint, we open a housing case, and we work with the property owners through that process. So that includes certified mail, establishing a compliance timeframe. If appropriate, it includes extensions. Also, when appropriate, we'll issue a uniform criminal complaint and invite them to come to court and talk to a judge. When you see these properties in this condition, after the length of time that we've spent and with the amount in arrears for both property taxes and contracted work to clean it up, we have not had owner engagement. So there's several scenarios as to why that might be. Sometimes they're deceased, sometimes they're out of state. There's a number of reasons why that we are unable to establish that contact. But trust me, we don't go from complaint to condemnation. They've had a lot of time to address these issues. Does that help just a little bit?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. First off, this street address is really messing with my OCD. 1614 East 15th?
I couldn't even read it. So, mine too.
Seriously, I know that we had an emergency boardup on this property, but this fencing that's around it, is that us as well, or is that existing?
Is it chain linking?
Yeah, the chain link fencing.
That would be the owners. That we would not put up something along those lines.
I was gonna say, that seemed a little excessive for one of our boardups.
We would secure the structure.
All right. Thank you.
No further questions. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is the property owner for this property here? I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structures.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Next item.
Thank you. Our next property is 1703 North Green. This property has had an open housing case for seven months. Property taxes are outstanding for 2017 to 2021 in the amount of $5,846.83, which includes special assessments accrued since 2018 for nuisance abatement and boardup totaling $3,414.4. Special assessments pending for 2022 for two-lock cleanups and a boardup total $4,082.42. This one has been a bit of a problem. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in May of '21 and has been vacant for an unknown number of years. In the last five years, there have been one reported police incident at this address. The current premise conditions include vagrants periodically sleeping on the porch, scattered debris, and bags of trash. The structure is a one-story frame dwelling. It's got a cracking concrete foundation, rotting and missing wood siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with numerous holes, and a deteriorating front porch.
In which district does this reside in?
This one's in District One.
Any questions for staff? If not, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is the property owner for this property here? I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structures.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Next item.
Our next property for consideration is 707 South Edwards. This is located in District Four. The property's had an open housing case for five months. The property taxes are outstanding for 2019 through 2021 in the amount of $2,837.73, including special assessments in the amount of $1,195.77 that have accrued since 2021 for lot cleanup. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in August of 2021. The Wichita Police Department has requested MABCD assistance with this property on one occasion. In the last five years, there have been one reported, there has been one reported police incident at this location. The current premise conditions include junk, trash, and tree debris. And please keep in mind that we abated this less than probably 120 days ago. The structure is a one-story frame dwelling. The structure has rotted and missing composition siding, a deteriorated side porch, wood and frame, and missing wood and framing members.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So we abated this 120 days ago, and these pictures are?
About two weeks ago.
So it's filled up like that in the last three to four months?
There's a high, high transient traffic in this area and with this property in particular.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? If none, then the Chair recognizes Councilmember Bluebog as this resides in District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Have we had any communication recently with the owner, or is there anyone here?
Um, no. We're uncertain as to his standing, whether he is free to move about the public or not, perhaps incarcerated at the moment. Not sure.
Do you think that's the case, or?
It's a very distinct possibility. There are outstanding warrants.
Okay. Were they working on it?
No.
They weren't?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no.
All right. I'm going to take staff's recommendation to close the public hearing, declare the buildings to be dangerous and unsafe structures, and accept the Board of Building Code Standards and Appliances and Appeals Recommended Actions to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition, 10 days to complete removal.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Onward to, I believe, is our final case.
It is. And I have great news. Councilmember Ballard, you'll love this. So our next property for consideration is 1304 North Waco. It's had an open housing case for two years and nine months, but it's changed ownership due to a tax foreclosure sale. Property taxes and special assessments have been paid in their entirety. Appropriate structural engineers' reports and building permits have been obtained by the licensed contractor working on this structure. And premise conditions, as you'll see, are pretty consistent with any construction and remodeling site. I have had numerous conversations with the contractor who's working on this property. They did have a COVID slowdown in mid-December, so he had hoped to be farther along than he is now. But we would be very happy in recommending this property to return to regular code enforcement and be removed from the condemnation process.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Kaylin, did this come before us recently? This house?
There are three duplexes together. So you saw 1300 North Waco relatively recently. It's just adjacent to this.
I was trying to sneak in a success story, but.
We're gonna give you some, I promise. This spring, we'll give you some.
Is there any further questions on this item? If not, Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I'm making, taking the staff's recommendation, do I still read all of the?
The staff recommendation is different than what is printed here. It sounds like the staff recommendation is return to regular code enforcement.
That's correct.
And Legal can help wording on that if.
Yes, sorry. I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing. I don't want to tear it down.
We don't get very many of these, so you're good. This is great. Councilmember, if you would wish to follow staff's recommendation, you just make a motion to return this property to code enforcement action.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to take the staff's recommendation to return the property to code enforce, enforcement process. Thank you.
Second.
Mine wasn't as smooth as Councilmember Hoheisel's. I apologize.
No, you did great. That motion has been made and seconded by our Vice Mayor. Clerk has opened the roll, and members have begun voting, and we would encourage all members to vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2021-54, city zone change from single-family residential to two-family residential for development of duplexes generally located on the north side of West MacArthur Road and within one half-mile east of South Hoover Road.
Good morning. Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because there have been valid protest petitions submitted, actually, one. Property owner has applied for a zone change from SF5, single-family, to TF3, two-family zoning. The subject site consists of 80 lots, approximately 40 acres in size, in the Blue Lake Edition. It is located, generally located north and east of the intersection of Hoover and MacArthur, and the site is undeveloped. In terms of the context, the property to the north of the site is Zoned SF5 and is being developed as single-family residential. East of the subject property is SF5 and LI Limited Industrial with portions developed as residential and farming uses. South of the subject site is Zoned Limited Industrial and is developed with storage, warehouse facilities, and a rock-crushing operation. West of the subject site is the right-of-way for the Mitchell Wichita Valley Center floodway. On December 16th of last year, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, 10 to 0. One member of the public spoke in opposition at that hearing. On January 3rd, the District Advisory Board reviewed this request and recommended approval unanimously. One valid protest has been received for this requested zone change and accounted for 47.69% of the protest area. This exceeds the 20% threshold, therefore, the request must be approved by a supermajority vote, six of seven votes. In terms of action, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Again, this requires six of seven votes. In terms of alternatives, you can deny the zone change, which would require five of seven votes, or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. And with that, I'll take you through some photos, and then I'll stop for questions. So here's the zoning map. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing it proposed as new residential. Here's the protest map. You can see that there was one protest submitted, and it was on the eastern portion of the property, and again, accounted for well over 20% of the protest area. Here are photos from the site, so looking north, looking to the east, looking to the west, and the aerial image. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Bluebog?
Thank you. Was that one protest, is that a residence, or is that just a blank piece of land that's out there?
You know, sir, that is a combination of, I believe, what's for agricultural use, considered agricultural use. The gentleman did come and speak at the MAPC meeting, the owner of that property. They expressed concerns with having residences near the lake, and they wanted to have a wall, a structure built to prevent residents from coming across onto his property. But when I look it up in GIS, it shows it as being for agricultural use. But you can see it's a pond, looks like some outbuildings there as well.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I was reading that in the notes about the fence, but it also said the developer would have a berm there. Does that, did the person who wrote the protest think that was okay?
You know, I think what they were really wanting to prevent was people coming across. You know, and if this had been the other way around, where it was an industrial use or something that was coming into a residential area, they would be required to put in a wall, or at least a fence. But in this case, it's residential that's developing in that area, so there's no such requirement. Currently, what's in place is a chain-link fence with barbed wire on the top.
Wow.
Further questions of staff on this item? See none. Is there input from the public on this item?
Mayor, there is no input.
There is no input because it's MAPC, and we're not the county, which I think has inputs. So thank you, Legal, for being consistent and ensuring I'm following the rules. So there is no public input on this item besides what was already presented. So therefore, I will recognize Councilmember Bluebog as this resides in District Four.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I do see the need for more housing in the area, and I'd like to take staff's recommendation to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone chains, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize after necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right, let's start off with appointments. First, I have board appointments. Based on recent employee elections, I am appointing the following individuals to the Based on recent employee elections, I am appointing the following individuals to the Police and Fire Retirement Board, and that would be Lim Moore, Brady Cyfreys, and Blake Mumma, who is filling an unexpired term. Then, thanks everyone who reached out about the official appointments for our community boards. I was, I believe, able to accommodate everyone except for one member who will likely be the person when we get some more subcommittees to get him where he wants to be. So with that, first is Councilmember Johnson will be appointed to the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council, the Exploration Place Board of Trustees, which taught downtown development, and the Plastic Bag Task Force. Vice Mayor Tuttle will retain the National Baseball Congress, WAMPO, Plastic Bag Task Force, and be added to the, as a member from the city on the Mental Health Board. Councilmember Hoheisel will be appointed to REEP, WAMPO, Chief Elected Officials Board, and the Cowtown Board. Councilmember Fry will retain the National Baseball Congress. Visit Wichita, WAMPO, be, at his discretion, removed from the Art Council and be appointed for his first term on the WSU Tech Board. Councilmember Ballard will be appointed to the Art Council Board, the Botanica Board, WAMPO, Downtown Development, and also our second member on the Mental Health Board. From my understanding, that leaves one opening for the Art Council, so if anyone is interested in that, please have a chat with me, and we'll be happy to put someone on the Art Council as needed. So those are a lot of appointments, but we can open it up if people have their own appointments as well at this time so that we can do this all in one swoop. There's no more appointments. Let's go ahead and get the appointments out of the way, and then we'll get to general discussion and recommended action. So with that, I'll make the motion to accept the appointments.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Having received seven yea votes, the motion does pass. Now we're back on Councilmember comments. Are there comments? I did want to follow up with the city manager on, after last week, with the health, with the public health professionals who came in and gave us an update with COVID. Do we have any further update on our role, or possible role, in assisting more with vaccine locations and doing our part in this pandemic?
Yes, Mayor. I've reached out to the county manager, shared all of the council's suggestions. They appreciated our offer to stand up one or multiple testing sites. I believe that they will work with our libraries in terms of having more rotations into facilities. However, they have staffing concerns about anything like a drive-up, which we had offered a drive-up at our transit facility as we had early on in the pandemic when we were doing testing. But they'll keep it under advisement, and if they have the staffing capability, they'll go forward. They're reaching out to Lord's Diner to see if Lord's Diner wants to have vaccinations there. Also, they did reflect on us providing transit to testing sites. They actually believe that that would be not in the best interest from a public health standpoint in terms of putting people who are possibly positive onto buses, and our transit director are the same concerned. So we probably will not be doing that, but we will still offer transit service to vaccination sites as we did with the libraries. And then in terms of coordination of messaging, the communication teams have already gotten together and are working on that. So I think those are the major issues that the council brought forward last week.
Appreciate the update. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Forgot to turn that on. I know I said this, I think to you, Bob, but the list of the boards that we all serve on, can we integrate that into our council pages on the website, just so folks know that there's a lot more to the job than Tuesday meetings sometimes?
An excellent idea. Further discussion or comments at this time? Again, just was on the phone with the hospital representatives yesterday to get an update on the COVID situation and of the recommendations are to just, as this rips through our community with this new variant, to use the precautions that we have been using at other times when we see a spike. There was encouragement for masking, encouragement, of course, to be vaccinated. That is what is keeping folks out of the hospital. And just want to, just quote my friend, Councilmember Fry, and there is no, it's never too late to get that first shot. So for folks who are looking for a more long-term solution to ensuring their safety and the safety of the family, please reach out to your medical doctor and then check the county websites for different locations for vaccine opportunities. There's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.